September 12th meeting to order. I'd like to welcome-
And I think it's important that we've given our lobbying staff a clear direction of where we want to go and what we want them to relay to the General Assembly because that's what they do for us is talk to the General Assembly members. And after this process, I think they have a very clear direction where we're going to go as an association.
At approximately 10:15 PM on Thursday, March 16th, fire broke out at a construction site adjacent to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners offices located in the Albert Coats Local Government Center and the Quorum Center in Wake County.
As local leaders in our areas, in our different counties, we owe it to our citizens to become involved in this process. And we as an association here, and I as the president, have initiated a forum, a leadership forum, that we're going to take to each one of the counties. I am Fred McFlure, and I am President of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. When I was elected in August of this past year, I chose as my initiative mental health, substance abuse, with an emphasis on the opioid epidemic.
The state legislature adjourned its 2017 session in the early morning hours of Friday, June the 30th, but with plans to return sooner than is typical. Normally, they wouldn't come back until next spring for a short session.
I told the folks in the General Assembly, I said, "If you want to see how an organization should work that's made up of Democrat and Republican, see the association." Because we do that job, and we do it very well, and we do it every time we meet. I've learned that if you've got to be able to laugh, and you've got to be able to laugh at yourself. Nothing's so serious that you can't laugh.
Kevin, thanks so much for joining us today.
Great. I thought you were going to say something else. Okay.
Hugh, thanks for joining us today. What are the new developments happening at the General Assembly this week?
You're not Sarah. You're not Sarah.
Obviously, we're still having some impacts from the hurricane, especially in the Highlands and Scally Mountain areas. Effects were felt, obviously, in those elevations above 3,000 to 4,000 feet, particularly along the Blue Ridge Plateau there, where the elevation changes are fairly significant. We still have, as of about 5:30, about 8,000 folks that are without electrical service. Last night, we had some fairly major road arteries that were shut down due to fallen trees, power lines, and miscellaneous issues, but all of those are back open. There's going to be debris issues that you're going to have to deal with on the roadways. You may have some isolated areas that are still going to have trees involved. We only had one minor injury that we're aware of. Our damage assessment folks actually went out today, and we haven't looked at all of those numbers yet, but the ones that so far we looked at look like there are two very seriously damaged structures, and at least three that have somewhere in the moderate to minor damage, and then a lot of other smaller issues, particularly across that region. We weren't alone. Macon, Jackson, the Cacher Sections, part of Henderson, a little bit of Buncombe, some of those areas down on this side of the world there on the borders. Sort of got the brunt of it, but we fared pretty well. We've been in contact with the folks at the town of Highlands, particularly Lamar Nix, Josh Ward, making sure that they had what they needed. We actually, we had a North Carolina Forest Service Chainsaw Crew Task Force that we requested to be sent in today, and we finished what we needed with them, and we actually sent them to the town so they could try and work on some of their issues as safely as they could with the power lines down. But we're making some fairly decent progress, and we fared fairly well countywide. Highlands and Scally Mountain might not necessarily agree with that, but they took the brunt of it this time.
Thanks, Warren.
Thank you. As Warren said, most of your, most of what we're facing at this point is vegetative debris from trees across the road, trees down. We are opening, we will be opening tomorrow a temporary disaster debris storage and disposal site, not disposal, storage and processing site on Foreman Road in Highlands. We have a second site in Highlands that is ready to go should the first site get overrun. It's actually probably going to be a few more days. Like Warren said, the town and DOT, et cetera, in that area are still in the cut and clear phase, so it'll be, it'll be probably a couple, a few days before they get into the removal phase, but we'll be there, and we'll be up and running, and we'll have that, ready to take in that debris and get it managed and dealt with in a timely fashion. We, probably in the next couple of days, I'll, of course, keep in contact with Warren with regards to opening a site in Franklin. Just kind of getting a lay of the land of the level of need for a vegetative debris site down here. And we're still trying to negotiate with the property owners to let us back in, so should hear back from them tomorrow. Obviously, we have other locations we can go to if the primary one doesn't pan out, but we'll have that up before the end of the week.
Chris, can you, I appreciate both of y'all's efforts to this, by the way, and being in contact with both of you. Very proud to have you both working with Macon County. Chris, can you give us a little update? So if a homeowner has debris down in their yard, can anybody take it to this site, or is it just the town, or how does that, how does that work?
No, anybody, anybody can bring their vegetative debris. Obviously, it needs to be storm-related debris. If there's an old brush pile, or pile of leaves, or grass clippings, we're probably going to reject that. But, but yeah, and basically, for folks that, you know, unfortunately suffer damage beyond vegetative debris, that cannot go to these sites. They're not going to be open for non-vegetative debris. They will, people just need to treat that as normal. They need to bring it to the landfill in Franklin, or the transfer station in Highlands. Normal fees apply, et cetera, but they need to hold on to those receipts for their insurance company, or any state or federal help that comes through to get reimbursed individually. We actually can't get reimbursed for that, but they can on an individual basis. We can't on a public basis.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
I just got a text that Highland School's on a three-hour delay tomorrow with limited bus service.
Could I have another 30 seconds for a completely different announcement?
Chris? Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce, some of you may remember that I am just about to stop being the President of NC SWANA. Just wanted to let you all know, we are hosting a little special conference this fall, and the key is it's back to basics. We're going to talk about very general, basic categories of what it means to run a solid waste department in this day and age, regulatory, funding-wise, et cetera. We're going to have the association, the league, school of government, et cetera, making presentations. This is a, this is a conference I've been wanting to put on for a while, and I kept getting kicked back, so since it was my last one as President, I just didn't take a vote, and so we're doing it. But the key, why I'm bringing that up to you guys, is that for each, for each registrant, a solid waste professional registrant that would normally come, they are going to be able to bring a county manager, or an elected official, to the conference at no charge. So just putting a bug in your ear, if any of you have a desire to learn more about solid waste enterprise funds, and why my tipping fees are what they are, and why I do business the way I do business, let me know, and we'll save you a spot.
Where is it?
It's in Raleigh. To get all those people, I had to put it in Raleigh, so. It is, that's a very good question. It's actually October 31st through November 2nd. And because, huh? I know, I felt like we would all just go over to Franklin Street and Chapel Hill and watch, just people watch. But some people have been near Franklin Street on Halloween and know what that means. Because we know that you guys don't have access, the conference is of two and a half days, you're invited for two and a half days, but we're really going to try to focus the stuff that would most benefit elected leaders and town managers on Tuesday, so that if you can only make it for the day, you'll get, you'll get most of what we brought you there for. Wednesday and Thursday, we'll focus more on operational best management practices and things, so.
Association does their thing on Wednesday. Association.
Does what then?
Their part, they have their program on Wednesday.
With us?
They have part of the program on Wednesday.
With us? They told me they needed to be there Tuesday. Yeah, stick around for Wednesday. Apparently, that's when the association will be there. I'll get an update from my folks tomorrow on how bad I've missed the mark here. Thank you for letting me, let y'all.
Know that. Good. Any further announcements, Mr. Manager? Mr. Shields, Bill?
The Macon County Fair starts tomorrow at 1:00, the opening ceremonies. Of course, it'll go through Saturday night, and we'll invite everybody out to Macon County Fair. We think this year that it's probably the largest fair that we've had in a long, long time, in every category. If everything holds to the touch, the weather's going to be nice, we don't see no hurricanes inside Macon, and so we encourage everybody to come out.
Good. Anybody else? All right. We'll pull all rise and observe a moment of silence, and I'll ask Commissioner Shields the latest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't have no public comment? Anybody here like to address us? Going once, going twice, sold? All right. Additions to agenda? I think I have one item we're going to add under appointments, under 13B, Community Funding Pool. It's the only item I have.
Chairman got contacted by John Fay yesterday with housing, and he had requested that we prepare a satisfaction of security interest in connection with a deed of trust under one of the housing program projects. I had prepared that, distributed copy to each of you by email, and a hard copy tonight. We just need the board to take that matter up and authorize the satisfaction of the deed of trust.
Thank you. Well, that is new business 11E. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to remove item number 10D, the burn building property appraisal, from the agenda. We have performed the survey and received the appraisal, and Southwestern Community College is in the process of getting their appraisal now. I just felt like it would be better if we could present those together and have a discussion on that at the same time.
Thank you.
And also, if we could add an item under Old Business A1, which would be Budget Amendment 49, and in doing that, I would like to pull Budget Amendment 49 from the consent agenda. Again, we've discussed this previously. In doing that, I would like to make what is now A on Old Business, item number A2. And under Reports and Presentations, I would like to give an update to the board on the evaluation of the Highlands TDC and Chamber, as well as the Franklin Nantahala TDC and Chamber of Commerce.
So that, now that you've thoroughly confused me?
I do apologize.
No, no, you're good. You're good. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I would request a very short, closed session for the purpose of discussing matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
And if we could also to add Ms. Sarah Graham from the South, or Sarah Thompson from the Southwestern Commission, two reports and presentations as well. That would be 9B.
Welcome, Sarah.
That's about all the damage I can do, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
We have 9C, just a quick update on our visit to Nantahala. Commissioner Shields and myself will make it brief.
All right. Anybody else? All right. We'll take that motion to approve the agenda.
No movement, Chair.
Take it.
Good motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're moving right along to Reports and Presentations. Eric, we'll start out with you, the TDC Chamber update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, the TDC and our Chambers of Commerce is something that has recently received some media attention, and it's something that Mr. Jones and I had the opportunity to visit with both the Nantahala, or Franklin Nantahala, TDC and Chamber representatives, as well as the Highlands TDC and Chamber representatives. And these meetings stemmed in response to questions that were coming from the community regarding the functions and the operation of each of our local TDCs and chambers. I've requested for Mr. Jones to pull out the governing documents and accompany me to each of these bodies and kind of evaluate, evaluate them. And this was, it was to be a checkup, if you will. It's similar to your annual physical with your doctor. We did not add to, change, or take away from anything that was contained in the governing documents for these bodies. We simply wanted to make sure that the chambers and TDCs were aware of the language and understood the parameters that that language set forth for them as they were performing the functions invested in them. This was a very positive experience. I feel like Mr. Jones can attest, it was a learning experience for everyone around the table as we went through these governing documents, as many of them predate, or as they all predate both mine and Mr. Jones' time in Macon County, as well as many of the members on the Chamber and TDC Board's times there as well. And today, we concluded our meetings as we attended the TDC meeting for Franklin Nantahala. Mr. Shields was there. And as we concluded this process, and as I reflected back on it, I can say without hesitation that the continued sales tax growth that we see, including, we received the year-end sales tax report today, and we're up nearly 9% this fiscal year over last fiscal year in sales tax. Aside from sales tax, when you look at the recognition that Macon County has received lately in a regional level, or at a state level, even at the national level, I can't help but appreciate the hard work and dedication of the men and women that serve on these TDC and Chamber boards. Their efforts, I feel like, have been and will continue to be the train that drives tourism in Macon County forward. And the recommendations that were given to them from Mr. Jones and myself did not come, were not intended to change the course of this train. It was merely to grease the wheels and make sure that, that everything that were contained in the governing documents for each of those bodies were clearly understood and were clearly being followed as they were, as they moved forward in their appropriation of funds in Macon County. And I think, you know, aside from the learning experience and everybody getting on the same page, that is, it was a wake-up call to me that, as a governing board, we need to be abiding by, and all the boards and committees that we touch, we owe it to the citizens of Macon County to be sure that we're operating as closely to those governing documents as possible. And again, it was a very fruitful and positive experience, and glad I got to take part in it and get a better idea of what each of these bodies do, and we're very fortunate in Macon County to have such dedicated public servants.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Sarah Thompson, going up with the Southwestern Commission.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Yeah, commissioners, staff, public. Thanks for a few minutes of your time tonight. I think this is my second annual report since I became Director, but it's something I plan on doing, is coming to you once a year and talking a little bit about the Commission, presenting our most recent annual report. Of course, I'm always happy to come another time if there's an issue that comes up that we can be of any assistance with. So tonight, I brought our 2016 annual report, and I also brought the NC Tomorrow Plan. Y'all may be familiar with the SEDS document that we create, which is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the region. We do that as part of our partnership with the U.S. Economic Development Administration. And in fact, at our board meeting later this month, on September 25th, we'll be asking our board to approve the SEDS. The NC Tomorrow Plan is all of the COGS, Councils of Government, across the state sort of compiled their economic development strategies into a statewide document, so I thought you might be interested in seeing that. So those are the two documents that I brought tonight. So as you know, the Southwestern Commission is the Council of Government for Region A, the seven western counties in North Carolina, and the 17 municipalities within. We've been in service to the region for 52 years, since 1965. We're called COGS in North Carolina, Councils of Government, but organizations like mine exist all across the country. They're called Planning Commissions, Economic Development Districts, some, something like that, but they, they exist in all the states in the country, and they were created in the mid-'60s when a lot of federal aid programs were put into place that brought aid to local governments and to local issues, and was determined that passing those funds through a regional organization made the most sense. So that's how we were born back in the '60s, and we've been running basically the same programs ever since. We work in three main departments. The Area Agency on Aging is the federal funding from the Older Americans Act, and the Workforce Department is federal funding from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act. So both of those federal funds have been around since the late '60s, early '70s. They sometimes have different names depending on the administration in charge, but they've been around as long as we have, and we're largely a pass-through agency. So those funds come from the feds to the state, the state adds their amount, they come to the region, you all add your amount, and then we contract with agencies in the region that provide those services. Our third department is Planning and Economic Development, so that's where I get to know a lot of local elected officials, because we do a lot of grant writing for infrastructure projects. Community planning, when- projects, um, community planning when requested by our local governments to assist in community planning, um, group facilitation, anything that y'all need that we provide, um, that's what that department does. So, our dues are, and have been, seventy-five cents per capita for a really long time in a region with two-hundred thousand people, that raises, you know, in the, in the range of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we then use to leverage those federal funds totaling a six-million-dollar budget, the vast majority of which gets passed through to our communities. So, as an example of how that works for you all, you pay about twenty-two thousand dollars a year in dues to the commission, and just in aging services alone, that brings in over three-hundred and forty thousand dollars of federal funds to, for aging services.
Credit investment.
It is. Um, the workforce stuff, you're all familiar with the NC Works Career Centers. They've been different names over the years. Again, different administrations like to change the names, but the services are still the same, so I think before it was NC Works Career Centers, it was Job Link. Um, some people still think of them as the, um, Employment Security Commission, or the Unemployment Office, but it's essentially the place where everyone, um, should go if they're seeking employment, or training, or they've been displaced by a layoff, and so we have a lot of funding in those centers as well. Um, a couple of things I wanted to tell you about that are sort of new, or specific, or, um, outside of what I already spoke about. Um, I've, I've been talking about the Mountain West Partnership for a couple of years now, but I want to keep it on your radar. Um, they, when the state reorganized economic development, you'll remember Advantage West used to cover the, the western twenty-seven counties, I think, and that was a state-funded economic development, um, agency that was supposed to promote western North Carolina for economic development. When that went away, all the economic developers in Region A, and a lot of the local elected officials as well, um, really felt the need to replace that effort in our own region. So, the commission has administered and raised funds and, um, managed this new economic development partnership for the seven western counties. Um, that's highlighted in our annual report, and, um, it's a really good website with, um, a resource directory for entrepreneurs and business owners. It will, anybody who is looking to do business in our region can find a lot of information there that they needed and get pointed towards, um, the county they were interested in. So, Mr. Jenkins, your economic developer is on that board of directors, and I think it's going really well. Um, we're also, I, I've spoken with Commissioner Shields about this, and, um, your manager, of course, we're doing a regional broadband assessment. Um, the commission has historically been an infrastructure agency. We've raised a lot of funds over the years for things like water and sewer, um, and other basic infrastructure. We recognize that broadband is the infrastructure issue of this era, so we are attempting to help move the needle a little bit in Region A. Because broadband is not a public service, and there are legislative barriers in North Carolina to the public sector getting involved, it, it's a little bit of a different process than, than we've been used to in the past. Um, but we, we have contracted with a consultant, um, who's, whose team specializes in these types of projects, going into North Carolina and working with, um, rural communities and figuring out how to crack the nut on this rural broadband issue. So, um, your broadband committee in the county will be involved in this project. All seven counties now have a broadband committee. Um, y'all were one of the first, so cheers on that, good job. Um, but it's gonna start off fairly soon with, um, a survey. And now, a lot of people feel like we've already done a ton of surveys, we're gonna over-survey the public, but really, to get a true regional assessment, we, we really need to get a lot of responses to this tool that we're gonna be using regionally, so that's one thing I would ask of you, is when you see that come across your email, to please, um, spread it amongst your contacts and network, and, um, it's, it's called aggregating demand, and, and I know y'all did a pretty robust survey, which is in the hands of the consultant. We are not gonna ignore any work that's already been done. Um, the, the other fa- the other step in this short, three-month phase that we're in right now, in December, will be, uh, training for the region's broadband committees on, um, what we can and can't do, um, public-private partnership models, legislation, funding, just trying to get the whole region on the same page as far as, um, how we can make some progress in this last mile broadband. Um, last mile, middle mile, it, the terminology is, uh, essentially, I like to remind people that although we are a rural region, we're very blessed with a very strong middle mile infrastructure with the Balsam West, um, ring that goes around our region. So, now we have to figure out how to incent private providers to, to come into areas where the return on investment won't be huge. Um, it's probably going to involve some money on the table that we provide, and I'm hoping that as we go through this process, perhaps some federal or state funding will come available to help rural communities build some infrastructure. So, that's where we are with that, I'll keep you updated. Um, also, a, a couple of you came, we're, we've been doing COG orientations once a year after elections, um, it's my attempt to, to get you all better oriented to our agency before your first, um, budget meeting comes along, and you see our line item and wonder why we're there. So, um, as I send notices out about that, I hope you'll take the opportunity to come, but anytime, um, that you wanna sit down and talk to me about the commission, I'm available, please just ask. Um, finally, last thing, the same day as our next board meeting, September twenty-fifth, um, Napoleon Wallace, who is the new, um, Pat Mitchell, which only means something to you if you worked with Pat, but he's the, um, Assistant Secretary for the North Carolina Department of Commerce for Rural Economic Development, and he'll be visiting our region that day. Um, I will send your manager the specific information, but he's a, a good guy to know, um, holds the purse strings on a lot of state funds, and a really nice guy. We're gonna be holding two sessions for him to meet leaders in the region on September twenty-fifth, so I think the one closest to y'all will be in Silva at nine AM that morning, but I'll send Derek the information. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Sarah, I just wanna say, I appreciate what you've done for Macon County. You put us on the map, you're in this direction, and I just wanna say personally, thank you, I hope these people here understand the load you play with that region.
Well, thank you. I, I've said it in my letter in the annual report, but I really believe it, which is that, um, you know, all the federal programs are great, and they bring a lot of money into the region, but I think the, the best thing about the Southwestern Commission is that it gives you all a, um, a regional voice and a way to work with your neighbors, and, um, one thing I've realized since taking the director's position, of course, they've been with the commission about seven years, but our region has a reputation across the state for being really tight and working well together, and so I'm, I'm very proud of that, and I think you all deserve the credit for that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, and we are convening quarterly mayor's meetings now, and there's one tonight in Franklin, so I'm gonna excuse myself and go join some of the region's mayors for dinner.
We think we'll go eat.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Update on the visit to Nantahala, Commissioner Higdon and Commissioner Shields.
Just briefly, uh, to request some of the Nantahala residents. Commissioner Shields, Warren Caden, county manager, we went over and spent high today with the Nantahala. Uh, those folks never asked for anything, we never send them a whole lot of money back, the tax dollars, but, uh, looked at the lab, went to the school, looked at the library, community building, and Mr. Shields, everybody confirmed, and go to the bathroom in the community building, the roof's leaking, it's time to do something, so, uh, then we visited Rick Park, uh, EMS building, most of the county facilities in Nantahala, and like we told them in our meeting, is whatever they're requesting will identify the need, but nothing's gonna happen tomorrow, and I hope that we can coordinate, we have some definitive things we'd like to do in Nantahala, I think, but it ought to be worked into our CIP plan, and I think Derek says that's shaping up pretty good, or how do we integrate? Will there be an opportunity for those of us who identify needs to integrate that into the plan?
The way we've envisioned the, the CIP process working, and, and as it is currently unfolding, um, we have had, uh, two meetings with the department heads, one where our consultant was Davenport, who is working alongside of us in this CIP, has came and, and met with us and the department heads, kinda went over the process, what was to be expected, passed out the documents that will be, um, the documents that the projects are submitted on, went over them, and we set at that meeting a date for all those projects identified by Macon County department heads to be submitted, um, on October sixth, the second, excuse me. We then had a follow-up meeting, um, last week, just to, uh, another chance to sit down with the department heads to make sure that the process was going smoothly for everyone, that no one had any questions, and again, reminded them, um, open-door policy where they can communicate with Lori or myself, or the consultants, uh, to get their project forms filled out and, and to get those submitted. In addition to that, I've also met with, uh, Dr. Baldwin, a- as well as Dr. Thomas, and also provided them with the, uh, project forms for the CIP, and went over that process with each of them, uh, as they will have, um, projects submitted as well. When we get those projects from the outside agencies and the department heads that they have identified, I then envision that process coming to the board, and the board having an open discussion, reviewing each of the priorities that we're able to gather, uh, from the department heads and outside agencies, and at that time, uh, the board will discuss each of your priorities, as well as go through those priorities, add to, take away from, or change as the board sees fit, and before we finalize, uh, that CIP document.
Thank you. I think the one other thing we got to do, in getting that principal position, uh, when the leadership group comes in, you scoot, uh, we got to be the new principal.
Briefly.
Yeah, I was, uh, I'm sure it made you nervous, but at the same time, I didn't like it. Um, but we're glad to have you in our community, and, uh, you'll be a new leader, and it's, it's just, what we have here, and I, there's two players here, there's the Fontana Library, you know, they're in this arena too, and I guess one of the things I think this people want to talk about is to see what kind of resources the Fontana Library has, that they can share with us to develop a CIP plan, or, uh, give some insight on, on how to upgrade, or how, how to make, uh, a media center in the community better, if they have the resources for that. Was that something we kinda talked about there?
Absolutely. The, the school's amazing, that's a clean, tight little building.
It is.
Those folks do a remarkable job. The Rick Park, man, the Rick Park was just slick as a button, that's totally general.
And then it, Warren's place, uh, we had the opportunity to visit, uh, EMT there, EMS, and likewise, and everybody seems to care about, uh, what they have, and, uh, it was a, it was a, not a highly thing, but it was refreshing to see that people do care about their taxpayer's money, and dogs, and stuff like that.
Till we got to the solid waste sites, and Chris is already gone, but, I look pretty rough, but he and I are talking about that. Thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Moving on to Old Business, item A1, Budget Amendment number forty-nine, which has been
removed from consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I made a mistake there. I was intending to, um, make that B1 rather than A1.
Okay.
Um, and just depending on how big of a deal it'll be to change the agenda, I can talk about it now, with the board having that in mind, or we can just...
If you wanna keep it on B1, we'll be happy to.
Okay.
Yep. I bet you do make a mistake.
He's charging numbers.
Yeah. All right. Uh, item ten A, uh, discussion regarding upcoming, uh, board meeting in Highlands. I'll, so, you wanna address this first, or me too?
We're welcome to go ahead, I just envision kind of a reset, if we're gonna do it next month, or, or before the next meeting, to recess this one, so it, um, would be sometime before our October meeting.
Uh, just, my thoughts and theory on it, as, as we have done this in the past, uh, I think you've been to a meeting in Highlands, correct? Commissioner Bill has. I think it's good to involve them, they don't get down the mountain very often, and I think it's good for us to, uh, be seen up there and show that we have a meeting. Uh, where I made a mistake as chairman, uh, obviously, as a rookie, was not putting this on our agenda at the beginning of the year, so now we're, uh, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with waiting until next year to do this, but if you gentlemen would mind recessing and having a different date, I'm, I'm comfortable with that too, I don't wanna cause any hardship by any means.
Do you wanna go in open here and go to Highlands, or you'll, say, we can change the time, we can...
Chester, do you have any recommendation on it?
Well, I, I think your options are, if, if you wanna try to do it, say, for the, within the next month, you can recess this meeting to a date, time, and location-specific, or alternatively, if you wanna do it on your regular meeting date, you could theoretically open the meeting here, at six PM, as you normally do, and five commissioners could go up the hill and meet you there, you wouldn't necessarily have to come down here to open that meeting.
What that mean?
We put the meeting starting a little later, what, seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, probably. Y'all, y'all seen a very long meeting? I have some, of course, some Highlands issues that I would like to bring up when we're up there, but, who knows, does that work with everybody for our October meeting?
Do, if we, uh, that's on the ten, uh, if you wanna recess this meeting and do it on a special call meeting, uh, I'd just have the regular meeting, it's, we'll meet here at six o'clock, or maybe it's six oh five?
Be ready to go?
We could be six oh five.
Where are you planning to have it in?
Probably the same place, uh, we'll, we'll probably have it actually at the community building, which is in the outfield of the Ball Field, that's where the town board is there.
As long as it's in the corner, it's profitable.
Well, it's, uh, what's the plan on that, and I, I need to make sure that that building's available, and I'll, I'll follow up for that tomorrow.
So, thank y'all. All right. Item, you wanna do B1, the budget amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And just to, as I get started out here, uh, this budget amendment would, is essentially a contract that will be entered into between Macon County and the Office of State Budget Management for a hundred thousand dollars to Macon County, to be used for community purposes. Anything that we can spend this money on that will benefit the community. Like to say that this, uh, funding came about through Senator Davis, and there was money available, actually, in, uh, sixteen, seventeen, we began having these discussions in, uh, July of twenty sixteen about this money that was available, and he essentially said, listen, I, I would like to, uh, get a hundred thousand dollars in funding for Macon County to be used for community purposes. And as the conversations progressed, and, uh, spoke back and forth with Senator Davis and his office staff, um, you know, we, we eventually started out as, hey, this would be great, um, for the community funding pool. When we're thinking community purposes, or community functions, and, and touching, uh, those areas that, that, uh, in turn touch our community, we felt like it would be a great place to, um, put those funds. As we got into the details and started reviewing the contract, um, we were, and I was under the assumption all along that the funds, that this hundred thousand dollars would come directly to Macon County, who could then simply put it in, uh, if the, the board so desired, put it in the, um, community funding pool, the monies that we already have, just stick it in that line item and move forward. Well, has... Well, has anybody ever entered into a state contract? That wasn't the case. And as we started reviewing the documents, the contract was originally made between the Office of State Budget Management and the community funding pool. That was the first hurdle, is the community funding pool is an advisory board, it's not a fiduciary. Therefore, it cannot accept funds in that manner. So, once we got that hurdle overcame, we then, we got the contract revised to be between the Office of State Budget Management and Macon County, who would then, as we thought, get the money and put it in the, those monies already appropriated for the community funding pool, if the board so desired. As we started reading the terms and conditions of the contract, there was a few things that jumped out about, that jumped out about these funds to us that were of, that were of great concern. And number one, and I'll just read some excerpts from these terms and conditions, the county would remain wholly responsible for the actions of the sub-grantees that were recipients of this money. So, it says here, the recipient, which would be Macon County, shall be responsible for the performance of all subcontractors and sub-receipients, and shall not be relieved of any of the duties and responsibilities of this contract as a result of entering into sub-contracts or sub-grants. Additionally, if said recipient sub-grants any funds pursuant to this contract, recipient shall submit a copy of its policies and/or procedures for monitoring sub-receipients to the agency. Essentially, what would happen is if these monies were placed, they would be different than the $75,000 that we appropriate and grant to, or approve the granting to the different community organizations that apply to the nonprofit funding pool. What this would require would be an administrative function of Macon County to basically specifically administer each of the grants that they gave out. So, if that was five, if that was five community funding pool applicants, then basically our finance office would be administering and overseeing those funds for five different sub-grantees. If it was 10, there would be doing the same for 10. So, it was creating some administration difficulties on the county, which we felt like would thereby reduce the efficiency and effectiveness of what our finance office is doing regarding our other operations currently. Also, the, we felt like that the most important thing here was that it would create, in putting these 100, this $100,000 in that pool, it would create inequity. Because the way this is structured, all the applicants to the community funding pool would not be eligible to receive funds from this $100,000. Any sub-contracts, and I'm reading again from the terms and conditions, any sub-contracts or sub-grants entered into by the recipient with grant funds shall be subject to all conditions of this contract. In the insurance conditions of this contract, the sub-receipients would have to have workers' compensation insurance, a minimum of half a million dollars, general commercial liability of a million dollars, automobile liability insurance of half a million dollars. In these requirements, we felt many of these, of the smaller agencies that would be applying to the community funding pool do not have these in place currently. So, that was of some concern. Here again, just reading another excerpt to, and I, yes, the one I just read, we felt like that while some of the people applying for these funds would be able to get these funds based on this, the ones that didn't have these insurances in place would not be capable to receive these funds. So, that was an equity issue that gave us some concern, as all the sub-receipients would not, we did not feel like we'd have an equal, would be on an equal playing field. Furthermore, all the sub-receipients would have to be 501(c)(3), and currently, the way it's structured, I know that some community organizations that we've provided funding to in the past, that could be requesting this funding, would not be set up as 501(c)(3)'s. So, again, I felt like there would be some inequity there due to that. So, in closing, we worked with the Office of State Budget Management, Senator Davis and his office, to have it structured to where this money would be given to Macon County and be used for community purposes by Macon County. In doing that, we felt like we could put this, these funds toward a project that would touch the whole community, and that every, all these groups and entities that may have otherwise not been able to accept this money, could benefit from this money as we applied it to a use, and we could oversee the funds, and be, oversee the funds that we're ultimately responsible for over the course of the project. So, what we're proposing to do, if the board is in agreement with this, is to put these funds toward the Robert C. Carpenter building project. What that would do is, you know, first of all, that project is a project that's used all the way from your local basketball leagues, your local Little League baseball teams, your, you know, your veterans, your, many of the community groups that hold meetings there, your senior games, basically a whole wide variety of the community could benefit from these funds in that way. And so, the reason that I discussed this budget amendment is because if the board does move forward with authorizing me to enter into the contract to accept these funds, then if we put those toward that project, then that will influence the money that we would otherwise be appropriating from fund balance to do this project. And it's essentially, the money started out all along as Senator Davis was made aware of monies that were available, and he wanted to pass, be sure that Macon County got those monies to be used for community purposes. And so with that, I'll entertain any questions, and be more than happy to discuss this further. That was just, as Lori and I looked at it, that made the most logical sense of giving the most people, allowing the most groups to be able to benefit from those funds.
Some of the money be made available?
It's going to be made available in this budget year as soon as we sign that contract. Now, from the time the contract's signed to the time we get the money, you know, that's...
You don't have a clue.
It's a reimbursement basis. I think I'm remembering right, though, for July through September, I can report any expenditures that have occurred, and go ahead and submit it, and I think they'll reimburse on a quarterly basis.
You don't get the $100,000 all at one time?
No.
That's right, you don't.
But you get it as you turn in the quarterly reimbursement.
If you don't get it all, if you don't, if you don't submit it in time, there's a lot of ifs and buts and that's about this money. There'd be a lot of confusion about this money. So, spend it all at one time if you can.
Yeah, I think we should spend the majority of it in July, August, September, and probably the rest of it on...
You need to spend it all in one lick, all you can. It is the way to do it, it's up to the board, but you need to spend it all, to get it all in one lick, don't do it in $10,000 rickwits, because it gets real confusing, I guess you found that out.
I think, I think that that's maybe a good, a good thought, to be able to apply that towards the Carpenter Building. I can't help but think back to our conversation 10 minutes ago, when we were talking about Nantahala. Doesn't always get monies, and Highlands and Scaly. So, when you talk back from a community funding, I think if we had folks from Nantahala and somebody other, Jimmy from Highlands here, and somebody from Scaly, they might argue that spending that money at the Carpenter Building might not benefit.
And again, going back to, that was just a, the county, another thing that I'd like to point out in this is that, you know, the state auditor shall have access to persons' records as a result of all contracts or grants entered into by state agencies or political subdivisions in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute. Additionally, as the state funding authority, the agency shall have access to persons' record as a result of all contracts or grants entered into by state agencies or political subdivisions. And basically, that goes back to the administration, and the, we would essentially, if given to another agency, would be administering that grant for them. And we would be, and you know, not saying that any agency is not up to snuff on bookkeeping or the records they keep, or their accounting practices, but if the state auditor comes in and finds a problem with another agency, then, you know, first of all, the agency would have to be a 501(c)(3). And if anything is amiss about what's done with that money, or who the agency, how the agency uses that money, then the county is going to ultimately be held liable for it. And I think the only, you know, behind our recommendation on that project was, we already have a fund set up, and we're already monitoring that fund, that, and we would have direct oversight and control over those funds in accordance with how we do our accounting. You know, it's acceptable because of our audit, and the, all the checks and balances that we have in place. So, I think that in looking at distributing those funds to that project, we certainly weren't dismissing the other needs in the community. It was just, hey, this is an ongoing project, we have an accounting system established for this project, we're already administering this project, so we would just put this money directly toward that project that we're already overseeing and administering, that is, it just happened to be a community building. So, that was, that, and Lori, I mean, you can feel free to speak. Is that kind of, you know, that was counted a conversation?
And this meets the criteria, it services a cross-section of the population. That's really important, if you read that thing close.
And that was another yes.
It's going to be a cross-section of the population.
And the new agreement, I'm sorry, Mr. Shields, go ahead.
Go along with his thought, though. If we get this $100,000, we're saving $100,000, and we can put up here that we make an earmark to what you're talking about.
Right, exactly.
And not have to go through all the red tape, what Paul was talking about, what you, what we've all talked about here. See, we can remember, there's $100,000 here that we can look to the CIP plan, or what it may be, that we can work towards assisting Nantahala, just remember that $100,000 is there.
Right.
That might be, but we can have both things.
And that was what, that was what we looked at. There are, there are many other notable things, like we've mentioned and discussed here tonight, but with the strings and the terms and conditions put on this money, if we could administer it, and our finance office have direct control and the knowing of where it's going, I mean, just as Mr. Shields said, that's freeing up $100,000 that would have otherwise been spent on the Carpenter Building, that would be our money, that there are not these strings, the same, the strings are not attached to that money, like that.
And this is tax dollars that we're spending, that we're gaging ourselves. Let's take the money out of the left pocket, put it in the right pocket, but...
This is tax dollars that was robbed from Macon County, because we put it into a pot. And Macon County did not receive no tax dollars, and we took that out of Macon County and sent to other counties. That's what this money's from. This money was taken from Macon County and sent to other counties, and it was put into a pot of money. So, this is our only opportunity to get any of that money back. That's what this money is. So, I think it's a good idea to give the community, services the veterans, it serves the community, everything from kids to veterans, you can't have more cross-section of people, and of course, the population, the vast majority of the population in the county seat, so... What do you need a motion?
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion, let the county manager apply for this money, and if successful...
I know, it'd be signing the contract, we've got...
We've got an agreement.
We've got an agreement, so let the, let the county manager enter into a contract to hopefully get this $100,000 from the state, and apply that to the Carpenter Building there by releasing, putting back $100,000 into our general fund, and do that as soon as possible, it's time of this form of motion.
Could we make a motion in a second?
Could we add to that, subject to the review of legal counsel? I know that Chester, we've discussed...
Chester's going to be doing the yard, I think. We'll be adding a motion.
Looked at the other agreement, but since it's been revised...
Lori and I are already ahead of you. She's going to email it to me.
Good deal, good deal.
All right, make a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. All right, discussion of landscaping at the Robert C. Carpenter Community Building. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, the last, at our last board meeting, we had some proposals that were brought forth for landscaping, and Commissioner Tate, you observed that, hey, we're comparing apples to oranges here. It would be great if we had a landscape architect come in and look at this, where we could have a uniform design to be sent out to all prospective bidders, that we know we'd be getting a quality product, and we knew that everyone would be bidding on the same thing. We have since done that. We have contracted with Mr. Henry Ross of Ross Landscape Architecture. Mr. Ross has provided us with a drawing, which I have here, and I'll pass out to you right now. This is the landscaping plan that has been... No, it's smaller. Will be sent out to prospective bidders for the landscaping at the Robert C. Carpenter Building.
We're kind of...
You see, it's just out of focus.
And with that being said, I communicated with Mr. Ross, and I think Mr. Ross might have communicated with Commissioner Tate to, just to make sure everything added up and was in line. And so, in doing that, we've, we've came up with this plan, and it will be sent to the prospective bidders who will return their bids September the 20th.
So, do you want, I guess we got two options. One is, is that we can wait until the October meeting, and then approve the lowest prospective bid. If you think there's any reason to speed it up by two weeks, Derek, we can probably move this to you forward. Is there a reason to speed it up by two weeks?
Well, I think that what we've discussed is we have a couple of things going on. We have the veterans' stand-down that's going to be held at the Robert C. Carpenter Building on October 5th. We're currently, as you know, we've had some weather that has delayed the paving, the start of the paving. This has again, of course, with the hurricane, or tropical storm, has delayed the paving once again. So, right now, we're in discussions with paving contractor Brysons, that if the paving cannot be completed prior to October the 5th, to postpone the paving until after that stand-down on October 5th. Right now, Tom, the building, substantial completion, we're working through the punch list. That's right now in the final stages.
Three of the disciplines have still got punch list items to complete. Two of them haven't been completed yet.
So, that's where we're at in terms of the building with the land.
So, when will that be done, Tom, you think? Everything, in the end of the building?
End of the week, probably.
So, the building's going to be good to go. The landscaping, I communicated with Mr. Ross, and he felt like, you know, as quick as we could get this available and get it moving, would be great. Again, we'll have those bids back September 20th, and they could begin working September 20th and get as much. He felt like, you know, if they can't get the entire job done, maybe work with that contractor to get ground cover placed in the areas where the landscaping will be. So, if we're able to get the paving done and get the landscaping started, it's just going to move the project that further along. So, if, you know, with the landscape architect that's been working with us, that has put together the bids for us, once we receive these, if he reviews those bids and sees that, you know, the land, that the landscape...
that, you know, the land, that the landscaping that has been proposed is in line with his plan and is good enough to give a go ahead on that, if the board, you know, it's definitely up to you guys, if you want me to, if you want to authorize me to work with that landscape architect to go through those bids and enter into a contract with the lowest responsible bidder that the landscape architect says is good with these, that he's good with these plans, it conforms to them, then I can certainly go ahead and do that with the intent of moving that, moving that along as quickly as possible without having to wait until our next meeting.
I think that'd be fine with one page, you know, that's a challenge to be a part of that.
Yes, absolutely.
I believe he does, he's sort of familiar with this.
He's done one or two of them, I believe.
Couple of them.
Do you like the plan, Jimmy?
The funds would come out of fund balance?
No. The funds would be, our paving bid came back less than expected. We have access funds there and in moving, moving that hundred thousand dollars to the Robert C. Carpenter Building, there would be no need to appropriate fund balance, which brings me to the point, we also need to approve Budget Amendment 49, which would move those hundred thousand dollars. So if the board could, wants to go through with that and take action to approve Budget Amendment 49 and also authorize me to enter into a contract with the landscape architect or with the landscaper.
Contractor. How many bids we have to have?
It's informal.
I think this, this all presupposes that the bids come in, in the informal range. If they should come in, in the formal range, which I don't think that will happen.
Do you have a?
Then we'll have to go back to the drawing board.
Do you have a suspect here, Jim?
We sent it out to the original people that.
The contractors that originally bid.
That originally betted, plus one additional contacted me about bidding on it. Was there any others? I'm not aware.
I'm not aware of it.
Do you have an idea about where it's going to come in?
I did.
Where it should come in.
Less than the original bids. For check.
If that's.
And I think those were in the informal range.
Yes, they were.
What do you need?
First, to kind of backtrack, if the board could make a motion to approve Budget Amendment 49, and then if we could do that first, then we'll, we'll do this one next.
Make a motion to approve amendment 49?
Say.
Any further discussion on the budget amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Then the second would be authorize me as county manager to enter into a landscaping contract with the lowest responsible bidder.
So motion on that? Got a motion?
Sir.
In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh votes, Mr. Chairman.
Good deal.
Somebody's got to explain to me what an octo lupin laurel is.
Evergreen laurel that blooms white and spread to five feet.
It's hard. It's hard enough, you know.
All right, moving on, item 10c, update on Macon-Jackson County line issue. Mr. Westhall, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to give just a, refresh everyone's memory on this. When I, God, it seems like last year, several years ago, when I first became a commissioner, I had an individual in Highlands come to me that had, these are round numbers, these are government numbers. So let's just say he had 10 acres of land from a professional registered surveyor, had 10 acres. He was getting a tax bill because his property was split, half in Macon, half in Jackson County. He was getting billed for 11 acres, even though he only had 10 acres per the survey because the Jackson County and the Macon County lines were overlapping and both were claiming property that he owned. So we started looking into it and our GIS analysts at that time, I guess this was five years ago, started looking at comparing Macon Counties where we claim the county line is compared to Jackson County and it literally looked like a double helix, the way it goes. This is, these properties that it affects are on a ridge line and it's some of the most valuable property in both Macon and Jackson County when it comes to assess tax value on a per acreage basis. At the time, our county manager, Mr. Jack Horton, suggested that we get the states to intervene and come in while five years later, we finally get something back from the state. So I'm excited to see this and kind of see how it flows and the conversation. Once we get this from Mr. Hall, I'll talk a little bit more about my conversation or I'll give my thoughts on where we go from here, or potentially go from here and how we handle it and the problems that we need to address between the two counties. So welcome again. Thank you.
Thank you and thanks, everyone, for taking time to look at this. I was kind of introduced to this, I came on with the county about four years ago. So it is kind of new to me, but we've been doing some valuable work here, working collectively with, you know, Macon County Tax Office and Jackson County as long, and as far as the North Carolina Geodetic Survey, who was taking the initiative to take all this field evidence, 2005 LiDAR data, NC DOT maps, and along with backdating deeds to collaborate to get a, you know, preliminary line, as you see on your maps, that's been provided. I'm going to be very brief and I'll let Commissioner Tate take back over, but we're still working on this. We're still working to get some numbers about revenue changes and acreage changes also. But as far as like putting this into our GIS data and pushing out some hard numbers, we're still calculating that as of today. But I've spoken, talked with and worked with Kevin Ford from the tax office and it looks right now that as far as acreage changes and revenue changes, there's not going to be that significant of an amount, a change. But I would like you to take these maps and, you know, in your own time, take them and review them. If you have any questions, please, you know, feel free to contact me or come by and we can produce some aerial imagery. I know there's several properties, along, if you look at map one of five on your first page, a lot of those structures, as far as like EMS taxes, those will not change. We already have an agreement with Jackson County, even though the structures are in, within Jackson County, they get EMS services from Macon County. So, yeah, we're still working to produce some, you know, some accurate calculated figures. That's an extensive process. And working with Ron Harding from the state, and he sent me these maps that they came up with and we were able to take the data and place it inside our maps with our software. So that's been an ongoing process, so.
Wes, it looks like the state's showing three lines.
Yeah.
A county line derived from field-located evidence, a county line derived from ridge line per 2005 LiDAR, and a county line derived from NC DOT maps. Is there one that they're saying is correct or are they averaging the three?
Whether, and when I want to, I want to bring you back a map when they've kind of consolidated this. They have pushed me one line as far as a shape file in ArcMap, which is the mapping software we use. That is a mixture of all the lines collaborated together. In one area, it may use an NC DOT map. In another area, they may have field-located evidence as far as a property marker or the old county boundary as per locus post. So, so, yeah, they have pushed that to me, but it's still in the preliminary stages. So I think talking with Ron Harding from the state, we're eventually going to have to come to an agreement between counties with you all and Jackson County. So, but it's good to see that we have a third party unby source trying to establish the county boundaries. So they, and get back to your question, we do have a one, one line. It's just not represented on this map. This is a preliminary map showing the four, or, yeah, four or five different possibilities of county boundaries, so.
Is, do they, and the next step in the process, will they provide us with a final, like when they say, when we have to agree upon something and Jackson County has to agree upon it, do they, will they, what is the next step after the preliminary?
The next step is, you all will need to review it with any questions and concerns, whether it's financial or jurisdictional, whatever. And I will get you, you all a map with the single line that's a preliminary county boundary. But this map is sent and provided for you all to, if you have questions or concerns about, you know, any, any land disputes. And like I said, I'll be working to get you all that map and that way we can review it and go over it, so.
Wes, is it, you understand on the proposed, among map two, sheet two, against, on the placement of the new monuments, is this changing the property, is this changing the boundary line?
Uh.
Are they going to put the new monuments? Is this actually changing the boundary line?
Well, it would be subjected to what's called the boundary line now because Jackson County, like Commissioner Tate was saying on a certain property, has their boundary coming within Macon County's boundary. So we have, in certain areas, we have three different boundaries and.
To establish it.
It's going to be, yes, to establish it. It will change in several places, yes.
All those monuments on there are monuments that they've located on the ground.
Well, but it's the, the red ones are the proposed monuments.
Right, right.
And blue is the, the blue is not the boundary.
So, so the proposed.
The proposed new monuments.
Yeah. The proposed monuments could also reflect descriptions within deeds, property deeds of a, you know, a monument that should have existed there, maybe as early, you know, the early 1900s that may no longer be there because it's rotten or been removed, you know, so.
The calls that's on this map represent what?
The calls in the table, the line table, like on page two. Okay, so if you look, if you look and I know this, the writing is very small, but if you can find L9, which is in the bottom right-hand corner of the map, where the first monument is, at the Macon-Jackson boundary, if you look at the bottom corner of the, bottom right-hand corner of the map, L9, it goes L9, L10, those are bearing and distance calls for, that have been from previous surveys or land descriptions or deed descriptions. So that would be, that way you would be able to locate those property lines and boundaries, so.
And it looks like all of them are, all the calls that are referenced are between found monuments.
Yes, according to this map, for this section of the, for this section of the county, it is. And as far as in the technical research, I expect I've not gotten in touch with them as far as their exact process of how they come up. I know they've used deeds and old plats and tried to go back, but, you know, as far as the exact process, I don't know exactly how they've done that.
At the end of the day.
It gets us closer.
At the end of the day, is this worth it? I'm going to put in this because I see a lawsuit somewhere. Somewhere this is going to be put in there. You want this?
Here, you need to hang on to my next statement.
Okay.
Yeah, when we go to there and while we're doing this. Then we need to talk about that.
Yeah, exactly. I know, I know for us, as far as talking with the tax department, there's been several concerns on revenue and stuff like that, but in, these maps, again, are just preliminary. There's nothing set in stone on them. This is just being evidence to push towards an established county boundary instead of saying, well, me and so-and-so walked back here 20 years ago when we decided that the county boundary lines are along the top of the cliff. You know, this is trying to use field-located evidence, land description deeds, calls and everything like that, so.
I think this is an indication that they've got a tough task out there and it's not an exact science and so they're pulling together as much evidence, which would be suggestive of where this line should be, together as possible, and doing the best they can with what they got. The intent of a survey, though, is to take the original description of the county boundary and place it on the ground.
And I guess if both parties agree to it, there can't be a lawsuit.
I'm going to have to look at that. I've not been asked to look into this. I haven't really worked on it, but I don't know what authority the counties do or don't have or whether that's something the state of North Carolina will have to do for the counties, quite candidly.
My understanding was that if both, Chester, when we first started this, that both counties came to agreement that, okay, here's the line, then the state would basically just rubber stamp it and say, okay, y'all are agreement or we're in agreement.
That's correct, from what I've also heard as well, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to make, mention, sorry, Commissioner, just one more thing that, you know, this, like Mr. Jones was saying, as far as having a survey, it would cost the county so much money to, you know.
It would inhibit it.
I mean, no, neither county is probably, you know, it's kind of been kicked out the door. I mean, that's the only technically accurate way to produce the county boundary, but the state has took the initiative to pour in the research and try to get this thing nailed down, so.
Just one question, Wes, on four or five. Where's so Jackson, this is going up the county mountain. What is Gold City at?
I see, you see the Silver Road, you see where the Silver Road label is there? That would be very close. I'm not sure exactly which parcel is represented there that would be the Gold City.
Let's see what type of business this, this property line, I'm starting my house right there, it runs half the house, it's in half of, half of the, yeah.
So, so the Silver Road runs there here. So that would probably be that Gold City trash right there, that big.
It was a hump in?
I would assume that that's my knowledge.
Probably right here, see where Silver Road.
You have to cover it.
Just not Silver Road there. Okay, thank you.
To the best of my knowledge. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can work with Wes whenever he and Kevin finish those computations and get that map reported line and email all that information to the board.
I'm good with that. The board is. All right, thank you, Wes.
Thank you all.
Here's.
You're welcome.
Here's why it's important, and this is why Jack Horton was persistent upon knowing where the line is before we get into the next line of conversations. The next line of conversations, and I'm going to use this very broadly, let's look at Highlands Falls Country Club, Highlands Falls Country Club in Highlands. They have one entrance into the club, gated community, one entrance in. Half of that club is in Jackson County, half of it's in Macon County. But the only way you can get in and out of that club is through Macon County. Guess who provides all the trash service to all those Jackson County residents? Macon County. We still do to this day. Guess who provides 911 service? When they dial 911, it comes to our offices here in Franklin. We dispatch our ambulance, our fire services, our sheriff's department, we go there. Guess who provides all the recreational opportunities? We do. So Jackson County on all of these very, very, very high-dollar residents, I think we, it was like, it was crazy, 600 million?
Oh, yeah. It was.
Dollars that we came up with, it was a lot of money on these residences that Macon County's providing all the services for, but Jackson County's collecting all the tax revenue on. So it's not only Highlands Falls Country Club, it's Colosseum Club, it's the entire Sagey Woods, Bowery area. It's a lot of Wildcat. So, and the reason that it's really strange, Commissioner Shields, is they're landlocked. Backside of Highlands Falls, where you can't go anymore, it's Forest Service. Backside of Colosseum Club, Forest Service. Backside of the Bowery Road area. So we have them landlocked. They have these little islands of land that you can get to only through Macon County. So to get to Bowery, for example, you come from Cacher, you drive all the way to Highlands, go down Horse Cave Road, take a left on Bowery to get back into this Jackson County property because there's no other way to get to it except by air helicopter maybe. So we. So again, uh, here we are, Macon County's providing the services to all these residences, Jackson County's collecting the money. So Jack Horton was, he was pretty persistent upon the idea that, okay, let's determine where the county line is, let's slip Macon and Jackson County, then we'll start talking about how we handle these services. The right thing to do, Jackson County will laugh at me, but in my opinion, just from a completely honest point of view, the right thing to do is for Jackson County ought to. Ought to compensate us, number one, or they ought to give us those properties and put the county line at the Forest Service since we provide everything anyway, let us just collect the taxes and take care of them. Y'all all know, I can see the grins out there, that's not going to happen. And I don't know if, if, I'm gonna throw this out there.
I think a local agreement may be very plausible.
But something needs to happen, I'm sorry. Few years ago, they gave us some to go to the Highlands Fire Department, because the Highlands Fire Department was, they raised a little greater stink than I did to. So how you start paying us for providing services. Yeah, but also changed their insurance rating to, all of a sudden, Highlands Fire Department serviced versus Cassers. Uh, there was some community up over that too, but there, there's a lot of services that Macon County provides as well, but.
If the county, this county has provided services for Jackson County, I think it's a highly appropriate topic for a local agreement.
I agree. Just gotta have that conversation. Any questions on that? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you working on anything.
Thank you, Wes. All right, broadband committee update.
If I could, and, uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shields. And I think that what the broadband committee has most recently discussed in our meeting was the recommendation, and if you'll recall, the, kind of the committee, the broadband committee summary report they handed out contained a host of recommendations. And I think the second one on that list was during the course of our broadband committee meetings, uh, we had some individuals that were involved in the, the wireless internet provider industry in Jackson County come in, I think we've even discussed it among the board here, and talked about how that the telecommunications ordinance in Jackson County, um, kind of gave them the flexibility to be able to provide that service. And, you know, in looking, in looking at it and evaluating it, the broadband committee felt that the planning board, who has just, uh, reviewed our telecommunications towers ordinance, they've done an excellent job. I know that, uh, they worked extensively, uh, with Mr. Jones to be sure that, uh, that ordinance was in compliance with all the applicable regulations from the FCC, uh, or FAA, and all those various regulating agencies. A lot of time, a lot of hard work, uh, from a very competent planning board has went into that, uh, ordinance. And i- in saying that, you know, we felt like that if anybody, um, was versed and had the, uh, capability and the, the know-how to look at assessing the feasibility of, you know, maybe putting some special conditions in there, um, for wireless provisions of, of, for wireless internet provision in Macon County. If, if anybody needed to be looking at that, it needed to be the planning board, uh, rather than the broadband committee. They've already, uh, put much time and effort into it, and we felt like that that was the place, um, that it needed to be. And Mr. Shields, if you want.
Mr. Jack Morgan had the information from, uh, Jackson County on how that they work with a, I'm gonna call it a small business person versus a larger business. And, uh, I think what I'd like for this board to do is to have that, to go back to the planning board and look at, to see the feasibility, uh, making exceptions for the small business person versus the large business person. Now, that gets to be a little, when you start making exceptions for the little person, then the, what's going to happen when the big person comes in, wants the same fee exceptions and things like that? We feel like, to call it the planning board, nobody can look at this, and if what you got, we're looking at it from a fairness issue, but sometimes that won't happen. But just, just because it's a, a, a small business versus a large business, you, you have to be careful when you're trying to give compensations to the small business just because they're small. And we, we feel like if, uh, if the planning board should look at this again, uh, talk about it and bring it back, and, and it, we may not have a small, large difference there, you know, Jackson County does. And, uh, there, there's some things that, uh, within their ordinance that, uh, the plan, planning board just needs to look at it again and see if it's feasible.
And to speak, to add to that, there, there's things that, basically, Jackson County's ordinance, like our current telecommunications towers ordinance, whenever you have a, uh, a telecommunications tower company wants to come in here and put a tower up, you've got to go through a public hearing process with the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. In some instances, when telecommunications towers come into Jackson County, they're subject to an administrative review process based on their, uh, that telecommunications tower, i- i- if the purpose of that is to provide, uh, wireless internet, then that is subject to an administrative review process rather than a public hearing process. And I think that, uh, you know, it's handled at the administrative level, and that's just one of the examples, uh, from the Jackson County ordinance. I feel like that our ordinance in a lot of places is less, uh, stringent than a Jackson County ordinance. Jackson County's telecommunications towers ordinance is 38 pages long, ours is 14. Again, I'll go back to, the planning board did an excellent job of cleaning that ordinance up, coming from somebody that used to enforce that ordinance, as I did for four years, in, in cleaning that up and getting it where it needs to be. And, you know, we thought that if, if there's any, if there's any room, or there's anything that the telecommunications towers ordinance can do to potentially further the expansion of wireless internet in Macon County, that the planning board needs to be the ones, uh, to look at that and make that call.
I think that, I think that you bring a valid point, if, if anybody needs to look at it, it needs to be the planning board. A little bit of history on the Macon County ordinance, um, I can't speak for, for all the members of the planning board, but I think I'd be safe in saying, uh, we thoroughly examined Jackson County's. Uh, we were very familiar with Jackson County as we were with their, basically, Buckham County West. Uh, and, and there's certainly a different process to go through in Jackson County. What Macon County's intent was, is in lieu of an administrative review, we just exempted those, was, was what we tried to do. And when you look at, when you look at the cost of the towers, uh, based solely on what's in those two ordinance, I think that it reflects that it's substantially cheaper to build a tower in Macon County. What Jackson County did was for this one individual, is not the planning board, not through an ordinance, but the county, the Jackson County Commissioners voted to exempt that person from, uh, from those fees. So that, that was handled at the county commissioner level, not, not through the ordinance. Uh, but, so I think, I think it's important that, that, that we understand that. Um, you know, whether, uh, whether we're working with somebody great big or somebody small, I think we need to, uh, like everybody on this board, we need to put forth as much effort as possible to, for broadband deployment. Uh, so, you know, if, if, if this board wants to task the planning board with reviewing that, I'm sure that, that they'd be more than happy to review that. Uh, and, uh, and, and I think there, there was, uh, at one point, there was a, actually a spreadsheet that kind of went through the different ordinances and, and hit the, the pros and cons of all of the ordinances from Buckham County West when we were developing that, to try to make sure that, we, we felt like that we had perhaps an ordinance that was not user-friendly prior to that, and we were, we, our goal was to, to fulfill, you know, what, what the planning board's, uh, charter is. Uh, but, and, and if we could do that and make our ordinance, uh, as effective and as easy to use as possible, that's kind of what our goal was, uh, that's why it went from the number of pages it was to, to where it's at, so. You know.
I think the gist of the committee, broadband committee, I feel like what we're talking about here, is, is, let's look at this thing one more time, let's see if there's a little tweak, and it may not be. And, but, I, I, I wasn't aware of this yet already, when you, uh, for Jackson County. Mr. Morton was there with us, and he shared a lot of stuff, and I, I felt like the total group was, um, you have a heart for the little man versus the big man, and, uh, it may be easier for the big man to come up with the fee. It's harder for the little man to come up with the fee and make a profit quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm concerned.
What, what, one of the, one of the things that the planning board heard over and over again, and I think that the commission at the time heard, was, uh, Macon County is, is, uh, a county that has a lot of outdoor activities. Uh, we have Appalachian Trail, we have a lot of hiking and things of that nature. And, and there was a lot of concerns, uh, in regards to that. So we, we kind of, we, we took that into, into consideration, or the planning board took that into consideration when they developed that, and, and to try to protect those areas, uh, and, and, to be able to deploy specifically wireless broadband, um, and, and be, still be able to protect, basically, the scenery.
Mr. K, you were in that meeting, anything you want to add to this?
I think just information, I mean, you know, just any information that I think would be, that, you know, that the planning board had went over that, um, that we could use would be great. We just didn't want to, uh, the committee didn't want to infringe upon the planning board that has put the research and the hard work in, and just because, you know, we'd hurt, um, say, hey, this is, this is how Jackson County's doing it, so we need to do that. That wasn't what we wanted to do, we wanted to back up and, uh, take a few steps back and look at the big picture.
I think, I think when we, when we think about, um, broadband, wireless broadband in particular, and the, the development of 5G network and the parameters in which that 5G network is, is going to have to be deployed, um, it's going to substantially impact the number of towers. So, so I think we need to keep that in mind, and, and the state, whether they move forward or not, there's certainly a lot of talk at the state level about the deployment of a 5G network. So I think as we, we, you know, we certainly want to, to encourage the deployment of broadband, but I think we need to keep in mind what the, what the potential is, uh, of that 5G deployment.
So I don't know if it's just agreement that we let the planning board go back and look at this and get put in motion, or, is there something, what we're talking about?
I think just a consensus in a motion.
I think it actually would be helpful to the planning board for there to be a motion that clearly defines what you want them to do. I think without that, they're, they sometimes struggle a little bit of, about precisely what is it the county wants us to do?
Yeah.
You know, what committee, committee would feel, do you have it?
Yes, and maybe, yeah.
More specific that you could be with that would be.
It'll help them a lot.
And I think it, you know, probably wouldn't hurt to have the, uh, maybe a joint, uh, meeting with the, the planning board and the broadband committee that we can get a lot of these questions, um, asked and look over the information that, that the planning boards gathered, I think what the, the motion is, um.
Mr. If I had to interrupt you just to say?
Yes, sir.
If, it would be very beneficial if you, if this board could provide just a, a, a shopping list of what their expectations are, what they want them to review, then that would help the planning board stay on track.
And I think, you know, basically, and, and without, you know, without getting into, um, what we have here is just to assess the feasibility of revisions to the telecommunications towers ordinance, which would create, or which would further the build-out of wireless internet in Macon County.
That's awesome.
But, and I know that's kind of broad, but basically, just to, to look at the feasibility, is it feasible? Why, why it's not feasible, and that might be in just sharing the information that, that you guys have already vetted and went through, um, that you came to the decisions to, to do what you did the first time, it just might be in information sharing. But just look at feasibility of, of, you know, is it feasible to change or, or make further revisions to the wireless telecommunications towers ordinance that would promote wireless internet expansion in Macon County?
I think that's great, I think that's powerful, I think that, that gives them, that gives them something to answer to. Chester, do you agree?
I agree.
I mean, I think that's, that's narrow enough that, that they would know what to do and broad enough that they could, to work with it.
Mr. Shields seems to think that it's a good idea to put the two together, the two committees makes perfect, it gets sense. To put the committee together and the planning board together.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
The question and answer thing, go, you know, this is a learning experience.
I, I think it actually would be helpful to the planning board, I, I think they were a little concerned, they may not have had all the expertise and whatnot to deal with the, uh, the broadband issue. But if that committee that's working with it comes in and brings their knowledge, it's bound to help.
So I, I think it's all, that would all be, and I'll set up administratively, I'll set that meeting up, we'll just call our, um, broadband committee meeting it, which is very informal, and we'll just meet, uh, with the planning board in the near future.
And I think that group would also be in a position to provide any clarification that the planning board might need as to the task.
Yeah.
Mr. Conover also would be a part of this information.
I, I was going to recommend that if there's any way he could be a part of that, I think it would be, would probably give your planning board a jumpstart.
So again, I think the motion would be to assess the feasibility of.
Do you need a motion for that? I mean.
Yeah, I, I think that they were asking so the planning board would have a clear direction, I don't know.
Yeah, and I think if you have, if you want them to make this a priority, you, I think you need to tell them that, that you want this to be first priority, if that's, if that's what you want. Because I think they've got some other things they're working on right now.
And I, I think when you bring those two together, not with, with Keith, Mr. Conover, you have another player here this evening, Ms. Sarah Thompson, and, uh, it's important, when you talk about priority, that it moves real quick, because when they're dealing with monies and grants and stuff, you can miss the boat.
But, but if you don't tell the planning board this is a priority, your first priority or your second priority, it's, it'll probably go to the bottom of the pile.
And so I, I just want to hear, Mr. Rollum's saying, is it, uh, we'll put it get, uh, meeting together with the planning board with, involves Mr. Conover, I think he's had some.
Does he come from Raleigh, or where's he come from?
Asheville.
Asheville. He's been out of the loop due to some medical things within his family. Then this storm brought him, his father lives in Florida, and I think there were some medical issues. Now this storm has got to there, so he's been out of the loop, we have been, I've been able to talk to him a couple of weeks.
Carl mentioned 5G, and, and from what I'm reading, that may well be the future. And I bet Mr. Conover can add a lot to that discussion.
Is that okay, so is that a, a way of motion or just an agreement?
Bring him to the next, have him to the next planning board meeting.
But that'll be Thursday night, you know, it'll be that.
Next planning board meeting.
Or if it needs to be done sooner, the planning board can always recess and take that issue up.
But it'd give us time to connect, if we were till October, it'd give us time to connect with Mr. Conover.
And get him here.
We don't know where he's at in the loop due to his situation.
Need a motion?
If you can make that into motion, then make that into.
I would go ahead and deliver. I would go ahead and deliver that, uh, that task from the board and let them have that at their meeting Thursday, and they can be, begin thinking about it and preparing for that meeting in October.
I think that'd be into a motion. Continue this conversation, uh, and request that the planning board review this information, and also for us to, the broadband committee with Mr. Conover, to be a part of this conversation in October, until October, the planning board meeting.
And that, and that's priority for, that's the priority for the planning.
Right.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, uh, consideration of mobility manager position for Macon County Transit. Transit Director Kim Adrian, I think it's going to be fed in by video. Hi, Kim.
There's Kim. Can you hear us? She's coming in by cell phone.
All right, Kim, I'm, I've got you on now. Trying to read something to work, it's not, sorry.
Got us, Kim?
Say something, Kim.
Good evening.
Hello? The floor is yours.
All right, Kim, I've got you on now. Okay.
You gonna try sign language?
So.
Get on a broadband, maybe.
Thank you so much for, um, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. Yay. So, I wanted to, uh, say thank you so much for letting me, uh, letting me miss the meeting in, in a sense, without physically being there. Okay.
Cause they ain't going there.
So.
I can, I can do that.
There we go. Uh, too much background noise in, in my place here.
We're shut, we're.
Okay. So, thank you, guys. Um, I did want to let you know why I'm not there. I'm not sure. I think I may have mentioned it to Derek, um, but as you're aware, we converted to, uh, the biofuel propane systems on our vehicles, and we were nominated for an award by the Propane Education Research Center out of Washington, DC for going green and, and, and cost savings. And so, we are here to receive that award, um, tomorrow morning. So, just wanted to share that information with you.
That's great.
So, the, I think the first item on the agenda is the mobility manager position, and I'm just going to talk, and, and then I will, believe it or not, shut up, and then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Um, this was an application that I brought to you guys last year in October, and we had discussed this, that, uh, Macon County was going to apply, but this is going to be a shared position. It's called a mobility manager position. So, we did finally get awarded that, um, grant. Contract became available in July. It's about a $50,000 grant with a 10% match, which is about $5,000. And we're only going to be responsible for half of that, because this position will be shared with Swain Transit. So, our share's about $2,500. And that is already in my, um, current budget, the $2,500 match is. Uh, one of the, the issues that we discussed is, is, um, in making a new position, making a permanent, permanent position, and, and I have discussed this with, with Derek and Lori at length, is that we will be posting this position as a grant funded position. Therefore, as long as we receive the funding for this position, we will keep it. If for some reason in the future we do not, um, get funded for this position, then obviously the position will be eliminated. Um, and just to hit some highlights of, of the reason that we need this position in the department, first and foremost is the promotion of regional coordination. This person will work for Macon County and Swain Transit, but they'll also help to promote the, the regionalized coordination effort that, that you're very well aware that we work with Clay County, Jackson County, and, uh, and Swain County on a regular basis with, for that coordinated trip, especially, um, to those out-of-county destinations. This person's also going to help assist riders. They'll work with healthcare agencies, with social service agencies, and businesses to help, um, all of those understand public transportation, how to use it, uh, when we're available, what the benefits are. And by being able to have somebody who can work with individuals and agencies, we feel like this is going to result in increased operating efficiencies, because we're going to be putting more people on those existing routes that we have. What we plan also is to have this person to develop and implement a marketing and advertising and a customer relations program. And we also expect this person to be responsible for certain areas of compliance, uh, for federal regulations. Our compliance, um, for state, especially for federal regulations, while and for state as well, over the last probably two to three years have just grown immensely, um, compared to what they were 10 years ago when I was doing the, doing the same job. So, those are the, the reasons, so that is the position that we're asking for. Um, and like I promised, I will shut up and I will let you ask questions if you, you feel the need.
Thanks, Kim.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two.
Awesome, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, the second item on the agenda is a discussion about a facility expansion, and this was kind of coming to you at a late hour, and I apologize for that, um, but really had no control.
Hold on just a minute, Kim.
Okay.
What we got to do, Lori?
We need a budget amendment for $50,968 to establish the line items and establish the revenue lines. When she said she had it in her budget, she was just talking about her $2,500 match.
Oh.
Because there, the grant itself is not within the county budget. So, if you could just amend your, uh.
So, I'm amending that motion to include the, uh, the line item as described by the finance director, Mr. Chairman.
$50,968.
$50,968.
Is that good, Commissioner Schills?
No, the attorney has his head.
Kim, uh, did I understand this would be a shared position with Swain County?
It will be.
Has there been discussion of an appropriate inter-local agreement for that shared employee?
Uh, we have discussed that there will need to be one, Chester. But, um, we, ob- obviously, I was waiting to see if the, the position itself was approved, so that, I figured I'll be in touch.
When, when, okay. I'll wait for you to be in touch.
Absolutely, which will probably be soon.
Thank you.
Second, you got with the second?
All right.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Now go, Kim.
Awesome, thank you, Lori. I, I did forget to ask for that part. Kind of important, but I did forget. Um, so let's move on to the facility expansion. Um, if, if you had been to my facility in, in the last three or four years, you are probably well aware that we no longer have a conference or training room. Um, with, with expansion and growth has come the need for more office space, so we took our conference and training room and turned it into the operations supervisor and scheduler's offices. Uh, very small space for drivers to have any room in where we're putting out their information as well. So, we did get the opportunity about two weeks ago, NC DOT is applying for some federal money. Um, and what they're doing is a statewide application. They're including Macon County as part of this statewide application for other, other projects that, other transit that are looking to, um, either expand or build a new facility. So, they did one, one grant application, went, and they sent it to me actually on the 21st of August, and they were submitting to, um, FTA on the 26th. So, it was a pretty quick turnaround time. Asked for information, um, they asked, we actually had had, um, some work done three or four years ago that was just a rough estimate of what we would like to do to the building. We submitted that, um, and it was about $183,500, was approximately the amount for, um, the expansion. And that would en, what, that would include is a new conference and training room and potentially a second story with some office and storage space. So, um, they cert, they asked that we include a letter of support either from our governing board or county manager, saying that this project was supported locally. And since, since it was before and after a meeting, so in between meetings, what I asked Derek to do, and I think there's copy in your agenda packet, was just to send a letter of support, and, uh, obviously, it wasn't a letter of commitment.
Uh, Kim, if you could.
Yeah.
Could you, could I just explain something real quick? If you'll look, uh, in your agenda packet, the letter she's referring to, again, the turnaround time, she received this on August the 21st, the turnaround time was Au- August the 25th. So, again, very quick turnaround time. However, it was an opportunity, uh, to hopefully receive these funds. I would like you to take note in the letter, um, the closing paragraph that I put, um, "Thank you for your consideration in funding this much needed project. Again, this letter is in no way intended to represent an endorsement or commitment by the Macon County Board of Commissioners for this project. Such commitment or endorsement can only be given following a formal vote of the board, which is scheduled to take place on September 12th, 2017." So, I put that caveat in there and did not want, uh, you to think for one second that I was speaking on behalf of this board. Uh, I made it very clear in this letter that that is not what I was doing.
I missed the totals too, Derek.
About 100, right at 183,000 for, uh, for the total expansion. Uh, it requires a 10%, $18,300 match, and as Kim will tell you, uh, right now, uh, she ha, would have those funds from the sale of surplus vehicles. So, it would be.
With the replacement of so many vehicles last year, we, we weren't fortunate enough to. Um, yes, some funding that's required by the state to go back into our budget, so I was figuring it out just a little bit ago. There's about $19,000 of that money, um, at this point. So, given that if it comes in at a 10% match, then we'll be good to go.
Do you have plans, Kim?
I'm sorry?
Do you have plans, a blueprint?
I have some rough drawings, so, um, before this could even happen, I'm sure I have asked for a feasibility study to be done, and they kept putting me off at DOT and telling me they would do it later, and of course, then the opportunity for funding came up, and they had no choice but to go ahead and, and put this in. So, it may be that a feasibility study has to be done before. Um, e- everything's a little murky right now. Really, the only thing that I'm asking for at this point is, if for some reason, if this funding comes through, would the board be willing to support that, given, you know, this 19,000 that I have in my budget?
Not to exceed that, is that what you're asking? This board would not exceed the 19,000?
Um, you know, and again, the cost estimate I had, it was about three or four years old, but it was the most recent that I had. Um, and one of the questions was, is this project scalable? So, I, I'm even willing, if I can get my conference and training room to scale back if I have to, uh, on that additional office and storage space, as long as we can have that, the, the conference and training room, because we are just in a situation where we really don't have the room that we need it, when we get new employees.
You're going to have to have.
I'm sorry?
I say, I know a little bit about the building you're in now.
Well, you do. You know a little bit about it, and, and like I said, if you've seen it lately, um, and I certainly invite you to stop by, you could tell we are, uh, cramming things in corners around there. Never expected in, in 20 years we would grow, and in less than 20 years, that we would grow and, and exceed the space that we got when we built the facility.
So, Mr. Man, are you looking for a motion not to exceed 19,000? I think we'd be, not to exceed $19,000.
You know, I would just, I think what, uh, I think what we're doing is, is this project, we would be saying that we support this project, and if you wanted to go that one step farther, we support this project up until the point that transit has the.
Fund.
Has the funds to cover.
As the 10% match.
Has the funds to cover the 10% match. I think that.
Is it? Or, I mean, if you don't have no plans, you don't have no.
You're going to have to have some.
Financial services.
No interlocal agreement.
I built that building.
But if, if the project's, if the project's scalable and you're getting the money, you're getting, uh, 10 cents on the dollar, and she's got the money from the transit vehicles she sold, I mean, if.
You can't beat that deal.
I mean, that's not free money. That money, you know, I mean, that's still.
It's taxes too, yeah, but, but.
These items like this, should that be in the future part of our capital improvement plan?
And it, this would be part of our capital improvement plan, except in our capital improvement plan, that just like there's an area for the expenditures of a project, there's an area on that project for, for potential revenues. And this would influence, I guarantee you, it would influence that project's ranking, because, hey, this project's $190,000, but it only cost us $19,000, and Kim has that $19,000 from the sale of surplus vehicles. So, that would make that project very attractive to be a, a, a project that's first on the li, uh, hired on the list, because it's got the revenue to cover itself.
And we need, now that money was coming.
Yeah.
He needed it, it was going to be available.
Right.
So, when they do need the revenue, they, uh, I'm sort of concerned about, you know, the total cost of the whole thing, if they don't know.
And one thing, you know, obviously, it's not guaranteed. I- it's going to depend on whether, they may pick three of the state's projects out of, if, if the state's up at five, they may only pick three and fund the three. Um, I, I did get an email over the weekend that they're also going for a tiger grant. So, it may be that they're looking at two different pots of money, so it may improve our chances. But again, there's no guarantee this will happen.
Well, you always do really good at that, Kim.
Right. We just want to be ready to go if it does.
I understand. So, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, uh, give you the authorization to write the approval of the letter, uh, requesting these funds that we approve, uh, up to the 10% match of, of, the 10% match of all that the transit can afford. Is that right?
We're approving the project up to the point that transit has the.
Has the ability to pay, to pay the matching.
Pay the 10% match.
Yeah. I'm putting it before a motion.
All right, motion on the floor. You got a second? Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Kim. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night, gentlemen.
Congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
All right, Warren.
Warren's like, no, don't do it, Warren.
Come on up, Warren, you've been patient.
He didn't sleep none. Since you didn't sleep none last night.
Didn't have anything to do with it.
Since you was up all night, Warren.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm here tonight to ask for the approval of the revised fire district map for Burnington Fire and Rescue. Uh, this reflects the new substation on Iowa Church Road. Uh, our folks did inspect those folks, take a look at their stuff on September the 6th. Uh, they did meet all the current, uh, stipulations from North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal to be considered a substation. Uh, and you remember, that's important for folks that live within that five-mile district area that we talked about last month. This particular facility will change, remove 169 parcels and 126 structures within that five-mile response area of, of their facilities, additional facilities. Um, and basically, tonight, your approval will allow us to submit this revised map to the, uh, North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal, so they can come up and conduct their final inspection on their facility and give them final approval for a substation. I made them the same size that you like, Ronnie.
Okay, this is for the insurance rating.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Question on that, if you got, these two, Cowie and the new Burnington are not five miles apart?
Um, yes. Uh, it, they don't have to be five miles apart. That particular district can expand up to five miles.
But is there overlap? I mean, if people in the Burnington district, if, say, if. I mean, if people in the Burnington district, if, say, if the Burnington Fire Department's not there, you got the KI district.
There would be, yes.
So you get the same fire rating, I mean, you get the same insurance?
No, you get the insurance rating for the department in which district you're included. So yes, to answer your question, if you were closer to a department, if you were, for instance, two miles to a department that has a, for instance, a class six rating, and you were farther away from a department that has a class seven rating, whichever circle you're within, whichever insurance district you're within is the rating that you'll receive. It doesn't matter if you're closest, it's whichever one that you're actually included in.
So you could be closer to a fire station and have a higher rate?
That's correct.
You still get credit for that on your insurance?
I can't speak for all insurance companies because I'm sure that there may be some. But under general principle with the insurance service organization and the underwriters for the insurance companies, it is supposed to be whichever circle you're within.
How many parcels does this bring you?
Currently, and we're not changing, we're not changing any of the response area for them. This is just the internal insurance district markings for the district that they currently have. We're not changing any of the response area. With the addition of the substation, pending a lower rating on Burnington Fire Department, they currently have a class eight B. You have a nine, which is the basic entry level. You have an eight B, which they got certified on about two years ago. Some insurance companies will give a break for that, some of them won't. This would allow, if they were to receive that break on the eight B, a hundred and sixty-nine extra parcels and a hundred and twenty-six structures would receive the benefit of that eight B.
And the benefit is a lower rate?
Yes. And again, this is just our Macon County Board of Commissioners, Macon County's request to have the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal come in and conduct the actual inspection on the substation without changing any of the exterior response area.
Wanting to do it?
And you second?
Motion in a second, McChrister, Gillespie. Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Oh, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry.
No. Uh-uh, no, that's fine. I do want to say that.
He can't leave you?
He didn't sleep none, so he don't know.
Recession now?
It's two, well, we got these folks.
We've been sitting out here all night. Consideration of retaining elected county status for temporary assistance to needy families. Wallet guard. DSS Director, Mr. Castro Spencourt, welcome. Give us some wallet.
Ronnie, we're starting to get wallet size.
Form security.
I was hoping, like, I should realize it was upside down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very quick. This is a request for the commissioners to vote to continue our electing county status. Macon County's continuously participated as an electing county for North Carolina's temporary assistance to needy families. You know that in North Carolina, we refer to that as the Work First Program. We've been an electing county for Work First Program since nineteen ninety-eight. We're only one of seven electing counties, including Beaufort, Caldwell, Catawba, Lincoln, Lenoir, and Wilson. The electing county status grants us additional latitude above the regular policies that apply to the other ninety-three counties that would place requirements or program expectations on participants before they can receive any of that financial assistance. Those expectations might be that they have a different application process, that they have to undergo a more stringent application process. They might be required to go out and do job search requirements that other counties don't make their participants subject to. Any of the unspent financial assistance that's allocated to this Work First block grant as a result of not giving participants financial assistance, that money gets to get reinvested back into our child welfare services, which includes our TANF eligible foster children, as well as it allows us to provide emergency assistance for any TANF or Work First eligible families. This ability to reinvest the unspent funds has offset county costs of services while increasing the responsibility of accountability for participants. And again, we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-eight, but the North Carolina Division of Social Services requires a county commission vote to continue that electing status. Just a reminder that TANF or Work First is not an entitlement program. So the electing counties can place those additional work accountability requirements on recipients, ensuring that they become more work-ready and that they are, that they're being responsible and accountable citizens before they receive any kind of financial benefits. Many of the county requirements that have been established in these electing counties since nineteen ninety-eight are now actually standard electing county policy. So it becomes sort of a pilot program by the electing counties that the state then turns around and adopts. So we've had to become much more innovative about how we look at maintaining that electing status by consistently improving our innovative approaches. One example is that we now count all of the, we used to be able to, in electing counties, used to be able to count all of the income of all household members to determine any kind of eligibility. At some point, the state said, yeah, that sounds like a really good idea. We think we'll apply that across the board to all one hundred counties. So in addition to the application and screening procedures, job search requirements remain a part of the practices that we require of anybody who comes in and applies. And at the current time, there are only seven active cases in Macon County. All of those are what we would call a child-only case, which is where a child goes to live with a relative, a specified relative who is not their biological parent. And that biological, or that relative, rather, is unable to work. And so there's some very minimal assistance that those relatives, as they're providing care, typically in the grandchild, that those grandparents can receive for the care of that child. So again, I would ask the commissioners to, I would ask you to vote on continuing us as an electing county. And if you need an example of that, of that hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars that we bring in every year as an electing county, Budget Amendment forty-seven is in your packet that shows that electing cash. But entertain any questions? And I've asked Sheila Conley, the Work First Supervisor for Macon County, as well as Kathy Makinsen, the Business Officer of Macon County DSS. Do you have any questions? I've brought them with me.
Chairman, I'd gladly make this motion. We think every county should be an electing county. I was chairman of the board when Sheila and all of us worked, become an electing county. We got sued. Didn't we, Jeff?
I worked on that question.
Yes, you did. And it was a long process through two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two. And we should be very proud to be an electing county and what it stands for and how it works. And a lot of those things that we were sued for is now the state is doing across the state. Three of those things, for sure. And so we should be proud to be an electing county in the way it's handled and the money that it saved. Fifteen millions that it saved across this state, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
And so I make that motion that we proudly vote to remain electing county in Macon County.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call in favor, seeing if I say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
Sheila, thank you. We ought to do that again sometime.
Okay, thank you.
Proclamation for Constitution Week. Motion to approve. Motion on the floor?
Who brought the proclamation for?
The proclamation that you'll see included is just declaring the seventeenth through the twenty-third Constitution Week in Macon County. I'd also like to give you an update on our monuments outside the courthouse. As you can see, the tarp's been over them because of the rain. Has came, they're finishing, putting the final touches on those, putting the documents in there, as well as the covering. And we don't know yet whether or not that will be finished by September seventeenth. But we do know that Charters of Freedom is working diligently to get that done and just...
This is conjunction with that, this is...
Yes, just thought it would be good to, you know, hopefully we'll have that monument complete and the ribbon cutting, although it's not been set for that ribbon cutting yet. But just to, you know, as you walk by the monument and if the board declares September seventeenth through twenty-third Constitution Week, just remember what that means and how much, how heavily we've shown that we support that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Satisfaction of security, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I was contacted by Mrs. John Faye Housing Program. As you know, there are housing programs that require recipients to execute a deed of trust or mortgage on their, for the funds that they receive for housing improvements. That is the case with Ms. Waleen Wall. By the terms of the note, deed of trust, she has now satisfied those terms as Mr. Faye has related that to me in an email from him. He has indicated that she has met the requirements of the program to be excused and have this thing released at this particular point in time. The board has to do that. Without the board's approval, it can't be done.
So move it, Kim.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda? Motion approved.
Check.
With the, sorry, consent agenda with the removal of number forty-nine. Motion to approve by Commissioner Higgins, second, by Commissioner Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Appointments, Board of Health, two seats, physician and engineer. I think the physician is Dr. Julie Pharoah from Highlands. And the engineer, I'm trying to get there, I can't recall.
Mitchell Bishop.
Mitchell Bishop. DOT engineer?
DOT.
I'm gonna motion to approve the two individuals.
So move.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion regarding the community funding pool. Mr. Ranger, can you give us a quick update on that and what's going on? When do we normally, and include in this, when we normally get a recommendation from them?
The recommendations, Mike, one of those recommendations, one more come in?
Normally about this time of the year.
I know that last year, we approved, November twelfth meeting, we actually approved the community funding pools recommendations that they provided to the board. Again, that was at our meeting in November. We have some vacancies on the community funding pool. And I think that ties back to, you know, what we're seeing with how long it's taken us to fill the seats. A lot of the boards and committees, it's just getting harder and harder to find volunteers. The same we've heard from representatives with the volunteer fire departments. And it's, you know, as the times change, I guess that's just something that changes with it, the way things used to be. It just gets harder and harder to find the volunteers. These vacancies have been advertised, like all vacancies with our boards and positions. We've had an active advertisement on our county website for quite some time now. I know Mike spoke with Karen Wallace multiple times now regarding these vacancies. You know, I think that, and I think that we need to just let, you know, see what all that, the community funding pool, what steps they've taken to actively encourage and grow that membership. And, you know, just, I guess, be a resource and help in any way we can. But we are definitely, we have not received any applications for those vacancies. And, you know, part of that came as a board motion to begin advertising on the website.
Do we need to move forward or are enough members on that board present to make these recommendations? Or do we need to fill this board before they can make a recommendation?
We, of course, gotta have quorum. And I think they've had some quorum issues. I think you certainly are gonna need to be sensitive to that.
And I can communicate, and Mike, I'll have him...
Can you, I'm just gonna make this request, because I thought it'd be good. Can you send us all, the commissioners, a list of, maybe even the media too, if they're interested, a list of what the qualifications are to be on that board? And then I don't mind at all trying to rally whoever I need to, to serve their community.
I can, I can, real quickly, if you, just in addition, just to get it out there a little faster. If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can go over those.
Sure.
Very quickly. The, the community funding pool is to be, and this came from back in two thousand, when it was established. The community funding pool has a twelve-member board. Members serve on a three-year rotating basis. The community funding pool members are comprised of the following. Two-thirds of the members represent nonprofits with the following nonprofits each having one member. You have to have one member from the Macon County Community Foundation, one member from the Macon Program for Progress, one member from the Peggy Crosby Center, one member from the Volunteer Council of Franklin. The other third of that two-thirds are just made up of nonprofits. So while those four were typically, you have to have four other members from four other nonprofits. And then one-third, so you have to have four that represent the community at large. They don't necessarily have to be affiliated with a nonprofit. So there's your twelve members. Again, four from those named, four from any other nonprofit, and four from the community at large, plus, of course, the two commissioner liaisons. So that is the...
Who are the liaisons today? Paul and I.
You and Paul.
We never... Haven't had a chat. Right now's when we should be meeting. Yeah, and I have to poison up the concept of a funding pool. How did that, how did you hear of it? I mean, I'm not one that's forced taking tax...
Well, the funding pool started because what would happen is they would come, these nonprofits, it was really to take the pressure off this board, if you don't know the fact, because they would all come to individual commissioners. And this way, it comes to this pool and it's a fire process. It wouldn't be fair if Kid's Place came to Mr. Shields and then some other group comes to me and then comes to you and all of us individually. It's hard to say no when a nonprofit comes and does good to me, because all these people that apply to is great.
Oh, absolutely.
And so this funding pool sorts through that and tries to, if it's a community clinic or Kid's Place, whoever it might be. So this funding pool was created to vet those folks, some of them that really didn't qualify. And they had a perimeter to what the qualifications were. And so that was to vet that and then bring it before the board disses their recommendations. And we usually always approve their recommendations because they really, it's hard work, it's committed. It's hard work, it's committed. And that's, and that's the reason it was done. And it's really worked well. There's a shortfall in the nonprofit, eight nonprofit members or the four at large members or both?
I don't know that. There's a shortfall everywhere. I think that, but however, I do know that in looking at the expiration dates in some of the terms of the members that have just failed to come back for, again, failed to seek out reappointment. However, I think if I'm not mistaken, Mike, those had expired before they met last year also. And so in the absence of coming and being reappointed, the process that was used by the funding pool last year, it should be no different than this year. Although the terms have expired, the members are continuing to act in that capacity. So, but we do need to get, Mike will get with Karen Wallace and work that out to get that, those housekeeping items cleaned up, see who needs to be reappointed, ask Karen, you know, what steps that that board's taken to recruit and bring recommendations for members to the board of commissioners. And any way that our office can assist her with that, we'll certainly do that.
If you can email that to us.
So it serves...
The requirements.
The requirements, and we'll...
They serve a great, they serve a great purpose. I believe our town, the funding boom, is like the county.
That's right. It's, it serves a great purpose. Yeah, I appreciate all the non-profits, but I don't support taking tax dollars and allocating it to certain... I don't think that's our purpose. Next item, if possible, we got two items. I got one, I know, for Chester, attorney-client privilege. There's one for Commissioner Higgins, two potentially under what reasoning? Same reason, attorney-client privilege? I think actually statutory reference there is to construct...
I think actually, statutory reference there is to construct or representatives of the county as to terms for negotiating for the purchase of real property or property.
We buying or selling?
Well, I'm gonna have to get Mr. Higgins on that, as to whether it's a purchase or a sale. The purpose for the closed session can only be used when we are purchasing property, not when we are selling property.
All right, we need to make you on the closed session. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's see it.
I don't have it, I have my word for it.
Congratulations.
We will. As soon as we get inside, it's for finishing that function.
Sorry, I was saying.
Congratulations.
What, did you just meet him and just jerk him out of the car or what?
Well, Nixon seems like a very nice, nice young man. Do you like him?
Good.
Congratulations, Prit.
Thank you.
You'll do that?
I just heard he's a great punch.
You didn't tell nobody?
I didn't tell us.
Where'd you go to?
Stop, we went over to Jackson.
Where'd you get right at?
We went to Jackson County. Didn't even do it here. That sounds good, I just wanna, just make sure we get everything done, we can schedule it.